We don't, we're not paying for citizens to be calling our attorney. I thought we went over this once before, didn't we? Okay. Do what? He is, he is the city's attorney, not the individual's attorney. All right, uh, water bills that have not been paid. Current past due for one through thirty days is nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Thirty-one to sixty days is three thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven seventy-three. Sixty-one plus past due for non-payment and for renters leaving without paying their bill, twenty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Total outstanding owing the city is forty-four thousand eighteen and forty-one cents. Again, I'm, I, I am curious because people, when we were talking to Hickory Creek, was very upset about thinking that they were going to take over the water department in a way that y'all wouldn't get no, uh, the citizens wouldn't be getting, I guess, the revenue from the city. Well, this is revenue that the city needs that is not coming in, and I believe everybody should pay their bills. I'm sorry. I pay mine and I'm on a fixed income. And for those that wonder, none of us get a paycheck for setting up here. So when that rumor was started, I think we need to stop it now because there is no paycheck. This is a, "I want to help the city" paycheck. It's not money to us. All right, now citizens' comments. I believe, uh, Russell was first.
My name is Russell Duckworth and I live at 202 Bonham here in La Donia, Texas. I'd ask Janda to get a couple of items on the agenda, but apparently, even though the city secretary told her those items would be placed on the agenda, they were not. So I'll ask the same questions I asked you in public comment last time. Madam Mayor, do you know who the Public Funds Investment Officer is for the city or who has taken Public Funds Investment training?
Wait one second. We want this and this given back to whoever owns them.
They don't need to be on the desk.
It's, it's not okay for you to restrict people's recordings of these proceedings.
You can record, but we don't need them on the desk.
No, that's not restricting you.
Well, you pick them up and give them back to who you think needs them then.
Well, I guess we can just have them in the office then.
It's not illegal for him to record it.
That's correct.
It is illegal for you to prevent him from recording it.
I'm not preventing him.
Uh, TCEQ violations. This was a letter that was sent out. Said that there were required to be ten per three years, that none were taken. And this was right after you became mayor, Ms. Harriet. Samples were taken on eleven, nine, twenty twenty-three and three fourteen, twenty twenty-three. I'm curious what kind of schedule we're following and if all the testing has been in compliance with this. My first question was, are you aware of who the Public Funds Investment Training Officer is or who has taken Public Funds Investment Training? So you didn't know on Thursday. You don't know today? I can tell you who the last person that was certified by this council was, and that was Dana Wyatt. Sorry. Financial reports and closing dates. It took seventy days to get the audit and financial reports for the 2020 closing year. It took ninety-eight days in twenty-one, seventy-five days in twenty-two, and the most recent set of financials, it's been a hundred and seventy days. I'm curious if we're going to get those reports before the election. I'd be curious to see how the city is doing before the next election, and I'm sure many other people would too. Uh, again, on that bullseye, the closer you are to the center, the better it is, and that's the line we're at right here, almost a hundred and eighty days later. So you understand, people are expecting the information that you promised, which is transparency. I shouldn't have to beg you for information that was at the end of September of 2023. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Well, I'd like mine recorded too, if it's okay.
Then given to Russell when you're through.
Okay. So I'm going to start my three minutes again because I was interrupted. Getting back to what we were talking about before, as far as the, um, uh, our, our organization's, uh, meeting on the square this weekend. Yeah, we have a political action committee, Rail, which is legitimate, legal, and we sent out these requests to everybody. As a matter, as a matter of fact, we had a meeting last weekend. Our, our meetings are open to anybody. Greg showed up last week, which he is more than welcome to. But we have our own, uh, platform. We have people within our organization that want to run for office that we support, and that's why we're having a meeting this, uh, weekend to let the community introduce our, our candidates that we're supporting to the community. I will mention during the meeting, at one of the first things, that there are other people running for office. So I just wanted to point out also, it's been mentioned, uh, within the community, uh, community that this flyer is illegal. It's not, and I have documentation to, uh, to prove it. It's because it's under five hundred dollars and it's a flyer. It doesn't have to have the disclaimer on it, although in the future we will put, we will put it on. It's just a, it's just an oversight on our part. Uh, getting on to feeding thing, and the last time I was up here Thursday, I forgot to mention a couple of things. In that, uh, in a previous meeting, uh, when it was on the agenda, the city had said they would put out, uh, the blockades for us to use, uh, for, for safety reasons, and they were not available to us at the last, uh, food distribution. And they also mentioned, I, I thought they said at that meeting that, uh, uh, new tiles were on order, but a, uh, Freedom of Information request showed that they weren't. And whether they are or they aren't, I don't understand how, uh, the needing of new tiles can prevent taking down of misinformation that caused, again, at the last, uh, meeting, at, at the last time, people, uh, came the wrong day. And we, we served over four hundred and fifty people at that meeting. Getting on to, um, the, uh, the, the new ordinance that, that you have out, I, I, I don't understand what, uh, in a small town, why we even need something like this. I, I was paying particular interest to something, uh, that they were talking about, outdoor, public, religious, patriotic, and such and such. If they expected a crowd of over thirty or more, then, um, they'd have to, uh, get a permit. So that means if some search, uh, some church group, uh, has decides to have a prayer meeting on the square, and they don't anticipate thirty people showing up, uh, so they don't get a permit. So all of a sudden, say it's the First United Methodist Church, uh, over there, they decide to have one, and then, uh, just before, just as it gets started, six, six other, six new people show up and they only had twenty-eight, now they have thirty-four. I mean, what are they supposed to say? Hey, Jesus, I'm sorry, we're going to have to get a permit. We'll just postpone this, but we'll get back to you. Anyway, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmen, City Council ladies. Um, and I'm going to turn some, I think there's not, but, uh, so that everybody can hear, but hopefully I'm going to steal your light. But, uh, good evening, and thank you for letting me be here. My name is Carlton Wilks, Senior Advisor in Financial Compliance with the Texas Water Development Board. With me this evening is my colleague, Joseph Stevens. Our team is responsible for monitoring the Texas Water Development Board portfolio, in part by reviewing over six hundred audits each year. Thank you for allowing us to share information with you. I have an understanding of the challenges that the city has faced. We are hopeful that we can assist the city to overcome any issues it faces related to your compliance with financial and economic obligations to the Texas Water Development Board. To be sure, we do not make decisions for our borrowers. We recommend best practices that may improve economic condition and the ability to pay debt service, and also recommend suggestions to improve compliance with the debt covenants. The city borrowed from the Texas Water Development Board a little over two-point-eight million dollars in funds provided to us by a federally funded program and received another five hundred thousand dollars in loan forgiveness. Upon receiving those funds, the city pledged to adhere to certain covenants. Currently, the city is non-compliant with some of those covenants. I'm here to help you understand the seriousness of this matter and the things that must be done to restore compliance. I also want to be sure that the city understands that we are available to assist on almost anything related to the compliance and financial obligations to the Water Development Board. Please do not hesitate to ask for assistance if possible. Our role includes assessing the financial health of our borrowers, as well as the status of our borrowers' compliance with bond covenants and other legal requirements. Financial compliance, Joseph and I, we report to our Chief Financial Officer through our Director. During our review, we identified two issues of non-compliance. One issue relates to the budget process, and the other concerns the proper funding of the Interest in Sinking Fund account. Subsequent information provided to us reveals the general fund budget was adopted at a breakeven level without the initial deficit shown in the prior year of fiscal 2022 general fund budget. If all current budgets are adopted at a breakeven or better level, this should address the budget concerns we raised for fiscal 2022. I would add to you that, uh, an additional review on our part is that your current budget does not appear to include debt service to the Texas Water Development Board. And so I would encourage you, this would be just a routine amendment the city council can pass, you know, after they've had a chance to look at that and consider that. But you want your budget to obviously reflect all obligations, so, uh, that would be one thing we noticed and want to point out to you. Proper funding of the Interest in Sinking Fund account is one of the most important elements of the bond covenants. This fund serves as a form of disciplined budgeting for debt service. A properly funded Interest in Sinking Fund provides some assurance that funds are readily available to pay debt service in full when due. We recently issued a letter of non-compliance. We asked that the city reply formally to the letter on or before April sixth, twenty twenty-four. The letter addresses the Interest in Sinking Fund as well as proper budgeting issue. We will discuss with the city an appropriate corrective action plan, a formal to-do list that provides a positive path forward. The solution for the city of La Donia may be as simple as a commitment to fund a certain amount in the INS fund for the remainder of the fiscal year. Financial compliance would recommend that the city review its key internal controls, make improvements where possible, and assure that the city council receives appropriate information to assure that the city complies with applicable statutes, bond covenants, and policies and procedures of the city. My comments are meant to be a challenge to the city to make positive improvements. We will engage with the city to help restore compliance where needed and provide assurance to you as well as to us that the city has the financial resources to pay its obligations when due. My colleagues and I look forward to working with the city, and we're available to assist in any appropriate manner. I especially at this time want to acknowledge Councilman Morris, I believe I got that right. Uh, I've known him by phone, uh, since August, and we worked through a rather difficult issue, and I am grateful for his initiative and involvement. So I, I needed to share that with you. Earlier this evening, we had a working meeting with the city council on these very topics and other things. And, uh, we shared best practices and will continue to do so, and will follow up with them to be sure that they know what is best practice and that they, over time, they can get to where they want to be, which is basically sound economics and compliance with debt covenants. So with that, I would like to thank you for your time and for your attentiveness earlier this evening as well, and we look forward to working with y'all. And with, with that, we're going to go back to the hotel and have dinner. But thank y'all for being here. This is a lovely crowd, so. Good night. Can we, we should go out that way, I think.
You can, yes.
Shall we? All right, good night.
Say, we can illustrate the agenda. Minutes of February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and regular meetings.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes with the correction of Mr. Halsey. So the, uh, Fire Department yearly donation, that is, um, I ain't familiar with it, so, I don't, I mean, I, I don't remember what it is or whatever, when it's due or whatever. So, everybody know what that, what that's about. I mean, I'm okay with that.
How much did it pay?
Six thousand dollars. The city has always voted at six thousand dollars to give to our department, on top of the, the money.
All right, I want to make a motion. We accept the accounts payable for, um, March first, the March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I make a motion, we table them till we get the audit.
One second.
I do, yes.
Uh, we have information reports from the Cali Public Works Department.
You have the C U M, Brad. I just called out of the hole. We fixed, just got three fixes a week over on King. We did two of them, Stevens. Uh, one, we fixed, we thought we had everything covered. Uh, the water line was laying directly under the sewer line. And the next day, the lady came back and she was very upset because it was still leaking. I don't know that it wasn't really leaking. And then the lady, they were called street party, came and told us there was one where those, uh, wells were that had been there for years. And sure enough, we dug up, and it was barely leaking, and we fixed that too. So we got both of them done. Uh, David, I mean Paul, I don't know why I'm recording. Uh, he ran a new sewer from the homeowner's landline to the tap. I don't know which street it was on, the one we talked about on Friday. And it was, it was completely replaced on outside.
On King Street, right?
On Friday.
No, I said, we discussed it in the meeting earlier Friday.
I'm thinking Richards, but, no, was it King?
Okay, but it is right. We went all the way to money with it. Uh, he's got a sewer to do tomorrow. I don't know where that particular one is. Outside of that, we, he's pulled a lot of the cattails out of the wastewater ponds. My friend came down and took a look at it, and he assured me, it'll cost a little bit of money, but he assured me that we can get the property down at the wastewater plant. The intake, your plans are there still, the intake could be on the major pond, be what's called a station pond, a station pond. Shows the, coming in from the south end, this year. In the state of Texas, you're supposed to do pond system with the prevailing wind, and our prevailing wind is out of south. Instead of putting the end of the intakes at the north end, so that the wind would blow the rags to the north, whatever Jack asked, oh, excuse me, whatever person built it, put the intakes on the south end. So we're going to look at trying to rerun, and I'm looking now at the plan to see where I might be able to tie in so that we can change the way it's running, because it is stacking up floods right there at that end, right around the intake. So I'm trying to get that period. The other two ponds are in fair shape. They've all got some sludge in them, but we've, uh, shown, and I showed you the information on it on Thursday or Friday, uh, literally each side. I have not got a price on it yet. I will, we want you to see it again. And he said when he had a complete probe workout, that he would get back with me and he'll come back down. That's all I got.
Okay.
Any questions?
Not on the agenda, so, do you want to bring up anything else?
Well, we need help.
I understand.
Paul, Paul, about that hole down there just now, at six oh five, and his waders were two-thirds full of water, and he was soaking wet.
And he was having major issues in the hole trying to get a clamp on, because it's, it's under high pressure. I say high pressure, our normal water pressure was just high enough to blow clamps loose, and he could not physically put the clamp on correctly.
I put the wall in check.
And so, yes, they changed over to a different clamp and we're able to get repaired. So, here, here's my opinion. We're either going to have to hire somebody, or we're going to have to start calling the contractors to do this stuff. You're, you're looking at the same kind of money, you know, whether you do, uh, hire someone or if you hire contractors. But, you, you can't do it with one person.
You know, it's like I told you, but our business, when he reads meters, that's two and a half days when nothing else is done. Because you want those meters wet. And, uh, he, he can't do everything by himself, and he's doing it right now. I do as much as I can to help him. When I went home, I had a choice of eating and taking a breathing treatment or taking a breathing treatment and coming back down here or changing clothes. So I chose to grab a bag of tubes and take my breathing equipment and come down. You know, there's only so much I can do. I told y'all honestly that I'm physically disabled, but I still have it with me. Like, I have to be there when he does a leak, and I pass him tubes and equipment as he needs it, but that's the best I can do. But he is, you know, right now, he's soaking wet and not happy at all.
Me too.
Yeah, you and I both have that. And that's all I've got.
And it's just, just, just kind of letting y'all know where, where the water is, where it is right now, so.
You know, it was perfectly.
Okay, we have our February twenty twenty-four run report from our, uh, Fire Chief, Grady Howard. On that report, we have medical emergencies. We had six. Structure fire, uh, zero. Grass fire, one. Motor vehicle accident, we had three. Landing zone, zero. Mutual aid, zero. Late lifts, assist, nothing. Uh, unknown type fire, one, which was controlled burn, out of control. Uh, for smoke investigation, there's nothing. Illegal burn, nothing. Hazmat, a natural gas leak, we had one. Uh, motors assist, there's nothing, and total cost for service were twelve. For the month of February, we held, uh, they had one business meeting, one regular meeting, one training night, and one council night.
Uh, see the administrative department. We really do need to, uh, has the council sit down and check out how we can hire someone else for the water department. I don't believe there's anything on, on our radar right now. Police department?
No contact from Indy.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
No contact.
Okay.
All business, discuss and consider action for events, activities at city. All business discuss and consider action for events and activities at city hall. If you look, you've got these on, uh, vendor application. All right, um, do we have any questions?
The only thing we need to do, I think, I mean, I. I, I like the, the forms, uh, we just don't have any costs on here. So, we need to decide.
Don't matter as much as a fair payment.
I'm young, man. I didn't see it. Well, I miss the park.
Can I get clarification on this works with, um?
Rock ladder, please.
Can I get a clarification regarding the vendor application says? Like, uh, typically, of course, I'm talking about twenty mile garage sale where they send in to us their information. And we obtain the funds, say for a lake, but then we come to the city and give y'all their information and pay an extra fee. I mean, um, I pay that fee to y'all instead. I mean, I just need clarification. Do our vendors need to start coming in and offering off instead of through, through our chamber?
It says to pay checks payable to the city of La Dunga.
And you can also pay at city hall. Okay, so we are wiping out our fundraiser for, that we do. That's how we raise part of our money that we, you know, we're, that we're able to do stuff for the community.
We're talking about all the sites.
Wow.
Wow.
This is.
How much tax revenue does the city get from that?
Was written up.
Jeez.
It was just kind of a.
That's fucking ridiculous.
Yeah.
Kind of a preliminary deal looking at, you know.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, this overrides, has been able to make this a fundraiser for the chamber?
No, it doesn't. But what it does, it says, if, if you're, if you're going to come down and use these downtown areas, the city's gonna permit. And the city should get that money because it's out there on the street. We're using city stuff.
The city is a nonprofit organization.
It's public.
It's public property.
Chamber of Commerce wants to make it a fundraiser, they can do it. You just have to build the cost of the permit into what you're doing. That's what every other city in the world does.
Commerce does.
So, we need to, okay, if we're gonna do twenty mile garage sale, what we're gonna do, so chamber comes to the city and gets a permit?
One permit.
Square?
If that's what the city council decides.
Uh, uh, if they decide that.
If they decide that and say, look, if we have.
It's one permit, correct?
If we have a sponsor that wants to come in and assume responsibility for all this, then that sponsor can come in and get that permit.
Okay, that's one that you clarify. And then, so we could continue how we do it as long as we get the permit to have the.
If these people decide that, yes, ma'am.
I just wanna clarify that.
There's, there's not any, I didn't get any push one way or the other, say, oh, the chamber's behind this, the city behind this. I don't know what the facts is here. I'm just saying. Somebody has to count heads out here because eventually, I drove across the lake today, that thing's about to be finished. And people are gonna start coming here. And the, the only way that the city can keep track of what's going on is to have some sort of permitting process to know Saturday, there's gonna be fifteen people, fifteen vendors down here. Well, the chamber says, well, we're gonna do that. Well, there's a collision there. The only way the city can keep track of that is to schedule it and then permit it at some cost where you pay for the fees. For the staff and if you have to have security out there, that. And that's all this is an attempt to do.
I just wanted clarification.
And electricity.
For the, for that to be.
If they decide it, yes, ma'am.
So, and you're saying this right here is the one they would need to fill it?
Well, there's, there's two of them. It depends on, on if, if it's just a use permit, they're gonna go down there, but I, vendors are mostly people who are gonna be selling things. Somebody's gonna throw up a, a tent down there, like it's, let's say there's a religious rally or there's a political rally or something else that goes on down there. If you're not selling stuff, they're giving things away. You probably just need to permit that. But if someone's gonna be selling things and engaging commerce here, then you wanna know what they're selling and what they're doing. Do they have permits to do it or license to do it? And those, that's the distinction.
And so, so all of them, this one, the third one.
Will need to hand it to.
Temporary use permit, application instructions.
Uh, that's, that's probably just instructions.
Yeah, just that's.
That goes with this one?
That goes with the temporary use.
Does each vendor have to pay thirty dollars or just one thirty dollars?
It depends on how you guys decide y'all want this structured.
We didn't set, we haven't set a fee yet.
Right.
I think we just put it in there, just to.
Right. So, I don't know how many sites there are. Anybody know? Ten, twenty, five?
Well, for, if the city's not, if, if the chamber's gonna hold the event, it's one, one permit.
How many sites are there?
Depends on how many people are going.
Depends on how many people sign up.
How many sites are there total? Just, if, two hundred? Well, that's what I'm saying. So, where, where do we draw the line at?
Why are we making a mountain out of something that we've literally been doing for years?
Blank sites, not anybody in them yet.
There's no specific number, because depending on how many people.
Please, um, are you gonna go camp?
Yeah.
Okay, so then if we've got fifteen sites, then it's gonna be fifteen vendor per, vendor applications.
Well, that's why I'm asking, if this is our event or fundraiser.
But it's a non-provision permit.
Then we would come get the permit.
Under the, under the chamber.
Garage sale.
Exactly.
I mean, for the twenty mile garage sale. You know, but we would pay for electricity that the ones would be using. But we're, if we did that, we're, we, I don't, no sense in having it because what we do with that money helps the community. So, if we have to just pay it off to the city, we're not doing anything.
Plus the tax revenue that the city gets.
We need to come up with an amount that we're gonna charge per site.
For each vendor?
No, no, no.
Each site is gonna be at five dollars, twenty dollars, whatever. If the chamber wants to take and take that upon them to do all the sites or whatever, then they get so much per site. They can, they can charge what they want to. If they're, they're gonna get involved and pay for it.
Don't you have to defend, uh, uh, define what a site is so it will apply to other events also? Because a site could be a, a picnic table for a group of, of people that wanna have a party out there. So, so we, the table's gonna have to pay so much?
That if we have the twenty, and I'm asking the attorney specifically, if we have an event such as the twenty mile garage sale, we should come get a permit. From the city to hold the twenty mile garage sale. Is that correct?
If that's what the legislation shows.
Okay.
I, I can't tell you because this is just a, this is a draft. And so, whatever it says, what it's gonna say, that's the reason you're having this discussion, is what if the chamber wants to come in and say, we, we wanna rent the whole thing for the twenty mile, eighty mile, eighty two garage sale, what do we do? That's something you guys need to iron out here. That's the whole reason this stuff is on the table. Let's talk about it and figure it out.
You said it was the public square unless they use electricity. It was our square.
It is our square.
Throw me out then. That's what he said.
If we.
Now you're turning it around. Goodbye.
This is a big fundraiser for our community. This, this just doesn't go to the chamber. I mean, we get a lot of stuff from school. That's why, I mean, we do a lot of stuff around this community. So, it's just not put in our pockets and set on it. So, what that would do, well.
No, I don't think you do.
Do because if y'all want.
Y'all get tax revenue after each sale. Y'all get all kinds of money from this that y'all don't even understand that you're getting and you're trying to make it more difficult.
The, the traffic that comes in each site, everybody gets, that is pig and whistle. That's the whole deal, was to bring people into our community, to learn about our community. And some people have moved here because of that. So, I don't understand. I don't mind paying part of the fee to the city or, you know, especially if they definitely don't want to do that. If that's what we need to do, we'll do that. But for every vendor that we get, that's how, that's a fundraiser for us so we can help the community do different things. And we have done a lot for Fandale ISD. We've been blessed enough to be able to, to help out around the community. And to punish, and I feel like we've been punished. I, and I'm not, I'm not against five dollars of that if that, of each bin or, I don't know. Electric, electric, I can understand. If y'all want a part of that, that's no problem. But why we don't.
You can't charge for the stuff over there.
Events that bring commerce to our city.
So, you want the city to brunt the cost of the electric?
No, I just said that.
That is not what she just said.
That I just said, that's not what I said. I said, for you to, those vendors that are paying for electric, so we can get those just either, just a couple, three of them. So, if we need to do that, that's fine. Okay, that pays for the electric those vendors are gonna use. But the rest of vendors out here that are setting up and don't use anything except space. That's where we make a lot so we can help this community. And y'all know we've helped the school a lot. Really, that's what we do is to work.
Uniforms, uniforms for the, uniforms for the band?
We've done a lot. I'm not even gonna go through it. Deisha, you know, we have.
Last year, they helped, uh, with the drill teams for like over a thousand dollars, uh, for the drill team. Their, uh, I've assisted this year with what they can help do.
T-shirts every year, t-shirts.
T-shirts every year.
Beta club.
A mascot.
December before last.
Giving t-shirts. Let me talk, please.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, they've given t-shirts every year to every child and, uh.
Teacher.
Teacher and staff. For, you know, to have the picture, you know, you, you're talking for them. They're black. You're usually black with a Fandale logo, some kind of them.
And that way, that was also so they'd be uniform when they go to any competition or.
Can we get back on the subject?
We are on the subject.
No, you're not.
The mayor asked the question.
And you were finished talking a while ago and I started talking and you interrupted me.
The mayor asked a question.
What, what they have given us.
I understand.
So, I was answering that question.
I understand.
It's okay. Thank you though.
For showing FFA, we.
I can't believe he has the audacity to run for mayor.
The elementary thing a lot over there. I mean, we, that's what we're here for.
The summer before last, when they, when they went to Nashville.
Wait. Bill Hill. Nashville, please. Anyway, we're not putting it in our pockets, okay?
Uh, I may work for the schools, but I do not, I'm not involved in what's going on and knowing in the city, so that's why I asked the question. Because I don't go in there. I just go to my vehicle and leave.
Right. Okay. But we've done a lot. And we'll continue to do so. Sponsorships for the, when they were showing their animals, is that right? All of that, we've, we've done a lot. So, if that's, we wanna cut out where we can't help this community, that's on y'all.
Any other questions?
Are you done?
I guess I am.
We're not denying that the chamber hasn't done a lot for the, for the city.
Literally did.
And a lot for the school. Not denying that in the least. What we're talking about is the vendor spots that we have around here. And the city has gotten, the city has gotten no revenue off of it. The city has gotten no revenue.
Sales tax revenue is still revenue.
I told you we're done.
Well, until you say something that's not true.
Let me finish what I'm saying.
I told you you were done.
And then if you've got something else to say, then you can talk. So, the city gets no revenue off of it. We get sales tax from other people, the vendors. I don't think any of the vendors are paying any sales tax. Uh, okay. Nevertheless, we, we, we have an expense here. And we're not getting anything for, we're not saying we want fifty dollars from every person that, that pitches a tent here, okay? We're asking, I'm asking, come up with a cost, whatever it might be.
Two dollars a vendor.
But you can't sit here and tell me that, oh, uh, Bob down here, he's not gonna use electricity, so, you know, he don't get charged. But Sally over here, you know, she's got, um, cookers and everything else going over here and, uh, so she gets charged for it. You don't have any.
They all got charged, Greg, something because that is a fundraiser for our chamber so we can help the community, put it back into the community.
The city gets no revenue off of it. If you, if the chamber gets it, that's y'all's choice on where it goes. I'm not saying that the chamber does not put money back in the city. I am not saying that. I'm not saying that the chamber doesn't do stuff for the school.
So, what does it save on?
But, Ms. Reagan, how many were out there were electricity? Did you?
No, and you can only count right here because the outside is not paid for by the city.
The other side doesn't have electricity.
Yes, it does. It's, yes, it does. Over there on the others, on the west, on the east side of the square, yes, it does. But that's, that electricity bill is paid for by the Shriners. Or the, the temple, whatever this is, the Masons. Thank you, sorry. Shriners, Masons, temples, whatever they are.
So, how many, how many electricity is out here?
I'm sorry, I didn't count the electricity, so that's got parking spots. I apologize.
No, there's no. Would you mind looking, see how many?
I will do it because we have other people that'll have events too and that's, that's, the town's getting, get bigger. We're gonna have to have permits.
Can I, can I say something as the president of the, the chamber tonight offered to? Look at what the expenses are that the city is incurring, especially with the twenty mile garage sale? Do you know what those expenses are, Greg? Do you know how much electricity was actually spent on the last twenty mile garage sale? So that we can come up with a fair. Vendor price to coordinate with the chamber's fundraising and provide for the, the city with something as well. I, as a president, have no problem with the city getting money reimbursed for the cost of the electricity. Or any.
City doesn't make any money for.
Twelve on the square, twelve right here.
Electric spots on the square.
You said there's twelve?
Twelve.
Okay. This is what I'm kinda thinking, if there's twelve electrical spots on the square, if the council, if this chamber commerce filled out one of these temporary permits for the fun, for the, um, event, yes, thank you, that we're having. And for the twelve outlets that are there, the city come up with, at the next meeting, we'll have the, um, the amount, we can go back and get what was the, uh, electricity for the next billing cycle. And charge just for the twelve that we know, whether y'all fill them or not, we'll charge chamber commerce X amount of money, say it's ten dollars a piece, that's a hundred and twenty bucks. So, not that that's what we're gonna charge, but come up with that.
We got it.
Twelve, y'all got the twelve?
Twelve.
Eight.
There's, there's six, there's six, and then there's one at the, it looks like there's one.
The gazebo.
Gazebo, and then there's one here on this corner, I don't know if it works or not, but.
There's eight pluggies.
Only we had electricity.
That's eight. If somebody wants to plug in.
Okay, anyway. So, I mean, that's what, I'm sorry, I mean, that would cover whatever amount we come up with, it could be, you know, whatever the electricity bill is for next month, another month behind. Um, and then that way y'all would get y'all's fee, that y'all normally charge. But you, you as a chamber of commerce would then pay us, it doesn't matter if you fill only four of them, you're still gonna pay us for the twelve. So that would encourage the vendors to use the electricity for that.
So is this just for the chamber?
Well, we were just.
No, no, I, I understand, but I mean, they're saying there's a temporary use permit, so is this just for the chamber that?
Well, they're gonna be hosting like some out, but for other people, if they want to do, if they wanna do this, yes, and then we'll charge them the same amount for electricity vendors. They're gonna be paying us that same amount, you know, for the electricity that, whatever we set.
Right.
But if they don't, I mean, if it's like a vendor application, like if somebody just wanna come up here and sell barbecue one weekend, then we charge them.
Right.
We charge it, yeah, we charge, it's not this thirty dollar fee, I would suggest higher, but, um, we charge them more money if they were just coming up here to, you know, set up just like a food truck or something that uses electricity.
So is the distinction, if they're a five oh one C three, as opposed to just an individual, because that.
I mean, I'm not supposed to let.
Because we, we, we're stuck in the city and, and the chamber, but there will be other tests of this, and there'll be other tests that are doing. And, and some other five oh one C three will come in here and say, okay, what's, what's the gig, what do y'all do for five oh one C three?
You're gonna fill out this and then you're gonna, and you're gonna what was.
Yeah, it, you need, you need to keep that in mind when you're trying to lay out, here's, here's the plan, how's this gonna work outside? Because there're gonna be outside forces coming in.
Right.
And, and just a little word on the law here is this, that the Texas constitution says you can't take public stuff and use it for private good. There's a, there's a constitutional provision that, cities do it all the time, but those that get caught wish they hadn't. So it'd be like somebody coming in and saying, we, we wanna, we wanna borrow your pickup truck for our five oh one C three and, and use it in the parade, or, you, you just, you, you better not do those kinda things. Doesn't mean you can't have a partnership with them, it means you have to provide some way or another for the access to the public property, the public stuff. That somehow has to be regular. And people don't like that, but you'd lot sooner come up with an idea that cost you five or six or ten dollars, Mr. Bo's to be in the court someplace, trying to defend, and it's, it's.
This is the hill they wanna die on.
So you wanna increase the cost of the vendor application? If, you know, as.
So like the chamber commerce would fill out one of these and one of these?
Nope, 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 nope. They would only do a temporary use permit.
Okay.
And then.
We're gonna charge them X amount of dollars.
Yeah. So if they want to do a temporary use permit, I guess for the whole property, that worked?
Sure.
Yeah. Then they could do whatever they want through the whole property, and we would just have a specific amount that they would pay. You know, for the use of it, and if they had one person show up, well, this is how much it is, and if they, you know, have, you know, three hundred, well then, it's still the same amount.
Get our amount from the, the bills, so that would be, it would've been like.
I don't know how you're gonna break that out.
You use June's payment versus July's, that's too pretty, I mean, heat, and what you use like their dishwasher and everything.
Yeah.
And then you go back to, June would be your May's bill, and then July would be June's bill. See what your variance is for her.
The difference.
I mean, that was just, that was just a suggestion.
Yeah. Or should we just use a, just a straight cost?
It was a best interest concept, we found out, the initial.
I'm, I'm good with that. You know, just gonna, and that would be temporary use, whoever it is, but it would be for the, all of the city hall area. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
But instead of it, but I think they should, in addition, fill out a vendor application as of the chamber of commerce, and that whatever we decide for a regular amount, we would put in whatever, you know, amount we set up for them, so that would be, that would be their vendor application plus their temporary use. So we have something to go back on.
If I, if I understand what you're saying, let's, let's say the chamber came in and said, we want the whole deal, here's the flat fee, we're gonna pay it. But then, as their vendors come in, they have to come in and fill out the permit, write for a fee.
No, 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 that would be the, that would be the vendor.
Vendor.
Or would they just need to use, this, this doesn't have any money amount on here.
Right.
This one does. So unless we're gonna add two somewhere where it has the money amount on there, then unless you're gonna do it in additional comments. But we need something that's already written in, so nobody can say, well, I don't know how much it was, it needs to be already printed in there.
No, it needs to be in there, yeah.
And, and that's, that's your job, that's the reason it's blank, because you can see how much conversation is being up that right now. That's the easiest thing on the whole thing, is change your ad, if.
You talking about the vendor or the temporary?
The money amount on anything is easiest to change, because if you're, if you're overcharging, you go, oops, we need to reduce that. If you're undercharging and not admitting, even meaning you're making a bill in, that's the easiest thing in the world to change, is the amount of money that you're charging somebody. And you can do that based upon performance, looking at things after you've had a vendor two, and you go, okay, we, we, we're charging too much money for this, or if we're not charging enough. Depending on what the flow is. So, if you wanna put some flat right in there with the understanding that that's, that's temporary, you're gonna look at that and see what happens to the performance, and the issues. Because obviously the changing that money amount is just getting word, and you, you, you can, I, with my limited skills, can do that.
So we could go ahead and approve this tonight with a certain amount. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we could figure that five dollars, you know, times six or ten or whatever, and.
As long as we put subject to change on the, the, uh.
Right.
Minutes, so that you can change when we.
So that it can change without going back and redoing everything, yeah.
Correct.
And then just use that as a a guy, wanna know, use this for, uh, I'll say civic groups or whatever, you know, large groups, chamber, uh, church, whatever, you know, if they wanna do the, the whole grounds. And then, um, the vendor application would be per spot or whatever.
Otherwise.
Yeah, otherwise, if they didn't do the whole thing, and I guess they could have a choice, and, I mean, if, if they're a church or vendor, they wanted to go in together and just do the temporary use, it might be cheaper for them. We're not trying to make a living out of it, we're just trying to recoup the cost.
Okay, so just as long as we're all, we're gonna use the chamber commerce, is that?
Yeah.
Would fill out this, that would fill out this, uh, temporary use.
Per use. Mm-hmm.
And X amount of money for the one day, for the twelve, for the twelve spots that have electricity.
That X amount of rate, yeah. I would just say for the, for the area, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put twelve spots or anything like that. And that a way you don't have, you, it doesn't matter how many spots are used. And then, uh, the vendor application would be separate and for an individual vendor, and when you, um, you said something about you would charge more.
I would, I would charge fifty bucks for a vendor.
I'm good with fifty.
Fifty bucks per vendor. If we just had a vendor. Um, because we're gonna make that, like.
If they don't, they can be here.
Right. Okay, and as far as the, for the temporary permit use, I'm gonna say ten dollars a.
Spot.
A spot.
So.
That'd be a hundred and twenty dollars. I mean, I'm just basing it off the electricity.
I understand, so a hundred and twenty dollars for the square, or the city hall grounds.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm.
To cover, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. And then if y'all charge a hundred and twenty dollars a spot, that's up to y'all, you can whatever you want. Y'all can.
Y'all are gonna get whatever y'all get, or whoever is the site. Right, and then y'all issue us a check, or who, whomever would issue the city a check for a hundred and twenty dollars.
Correct.
Now, with that being said, we, we're gonna send your subject to change, providing, you know, electric, electricity doesn't go over X amount of money.
Correct. And then, and then the other one won't change, correct?
Right, correct, the fifty dollar one won't change, I mean.
Or they're gonna wanna put in there subject to change.
They're, they're all subject to change, get a new city council in here, they can sign the change.
Well, yeah, that's right. Okay.
Okay, that's mine.
All what she said.
Subject to change, whatever she said.
And it's been seconded by Debbie. Jane, are you in there? Yes, ma'am, Debbie.
So, you make the motion.
Or who, do you, where this come from? Do you, you gonna sign this, or?
I have a call.
Okay, you put it in.
Who made the second?
Debbie, Debbie.
Do you have it in Word, or did I send it to you in PDF, or do you know?
I don't remember.
Mm-hmm, yeah, one of those.
B. Orders for water, sewer, base, and rate study.
We still don't have that, so.
Can you table it?
I have to. Motion to table it. No, 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 no. Yes, I'm sorry. Or do we want to?
Okay, I've got a question, the rate study, what, what is that, you wanna tell us again?
Basically, if we're charging enough or not charging enough, or whatever, that's what I'm getting out of it.
Did you talk to anybody?
I have not.
Okay, I talked, I talked to, um, I called.
I say that, I did.
I called Dr. Mud.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna hold them, and their water tap is fifteen hundred, and their sewer tap is fifteen hundred. Um, and so three thousand is what their total charge is, um, I did call Honey Grove, um, their three quarter, three quarter inch, uh, tap is a thousand dollars for water, a thousand dollars for sewer. Or their one inch, and that's just for business, their one and two inch is fifteen hundred for water, fifteen for sewer. If they lived outside the city limits, three quarter inch line is fifteen hundred water and fifteen hundred sewer.
Right.
Okay.
Super sixteen hundred. And, uh.
For both, or?
No, yeah, each, each one.
What is their two inch station?
Uh, it is just for business, it's fifteen. One and two is the same, for, it's just for business, because I only do three quarter inch for regulars.
Combs is twenty-two fifty. Each one, water, twenty-two fifty, sewer twenty-two fifty. Brenton, two thousand each.
May I ask if that includes the meter also, or is that a separate fee?
Mine was total.
Total.
Well, include, well, that was included.
Included the meter, okay. Just did want to give something.
But we have to remember another thing, every one that we do is another five hundred dollars. On top of every day.
Yeah.
So I don't know if y'all wanna go buy one of them, or or if y'all wanna wait on this rate study.
How long is that rate study in?
I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody about it. Yeah, and we're getting them every day.
I think we oughta go ahead and.
I am anyway, that, I mean, 'cause.
We've got one to put in tomorrow or the next day, for sure. I think they just put in one, didn't they?
Two on country land.
Two. They're, they're waiting also, two there. And that's, that's three right there. Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna lose on every one of them, because we're, we're barely covering our, our meter cost.
Great.
Yes, sir.
You need to put a footage limit on there, because.
Oh, yeah, that, that's, that's, that's right there, if the line is there, and you can just put a tap right there, that's it.
Say those guys out there at the rodeo running, wanting two thousand feet of four inch line.
Meter cost us right now.
They'll get a long meter tap.
And our tap fee's seven hundred and fifty in this current time.
And then the meter box and the lid and all that.
You're too cheap on your taps.
When did, what, what did we get? Did we buy some meter boxes recently?
We bought two.
They're almost two hundred dollars a piece, I think.
So that's, you know, that's.
She's not hitting the devil when he talks.
So.
So the box, the lane, how much?
Two hundred dollars.
Says three hundred total.
Yeah.
Five hundred for the chamber.
No, I mean, um.
For the meter.
Yeah.
Meters were ninety-five or ninety-six dollars.
You know, we got, we got them at a hundred.
We're using the.
So, so what, what's the timeframe to go out, if the line is there, putting in a meter?
Well, you can do it with PVC, but you don't have this, this stuff to do on, on a steel line.
No, I understand, so.
Yeah.
You can buy these, uh, PVC taps, if you just mount the taps out along there, screw the thing in, it punches the hole itself.
Okay, timeframe, an hour?
Depends on how long it takes for it to get to the main.
Yeah, I know.
Well, you know, some of your mains are down the middle street, some of them are on, on one side or the other, so it's hard to say.
Yeah.
I'll say two to three hours.
Okay.
Just to be on the safe side.
So, um.
So three hours, thirteen an hour?
I, I don't know that we can do one for an hour.
I, that's what I say, you're, you should be looking at five, pick five hundred dollars at least.
Fifty-five hundred dollars.
You, you gotta maintain it after that too, so don't forget that.
Cause remember, you've got your corporation stock, you've got your curb stock, you've got your powder line, and then your meter and your box.
Customer service inspection? Customer service inspection? And that's paid for by the customer. Should be paid for by the customer.
And you also need to put in your thing, where the customer, if he wants to shut off, he needs to put on his side meters. That curb stop belongs there, on tile and facing, and going, that even break.
Then have your council making ordinance, or every town needs to have a, uh, cutoff on their.
See why I said you have to come back to work, you make things so simple and gross.
And we have.
No, there ain't enough, there ain't enough money.
Uh.
To make you come back and work here.
It, it may, should be. We, we, we discussed it, but we never voted it.
For the new one, we. Oh, I'll be so glad when he's gone. I'll be so glad when he's gone.
So I would say. Probably for that, um. We're not sure, but at this point, no.
The water, all this, you know.
Order can be the same thing, I would figure it in the water.
See, this is gonna tap sewer view. Two thousand dollars.
Yeah. I, I would. Yeah. So when you figure total on that?
Does one, so twenty-five, we're gonna use twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, what, what's the total cost on the meter and all that?
There's a hundred dollars for the meter, and then two hundred for the box and the lid.
Okay, so, but that's, that's still in our cost, though. That, you, you're charging for it here, right?
Right, yeah.
I understand our cost.
Is, is three.
Plus, well, I mean, we gotta buy that curb stop, so. But if you got, you got it in there, so that's fine, okay.
This is when workshops come in real fucking handy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we start, if we wanted the total to be twenty-five hundred. You got five hundred for our fraternity, so that's down to two thousand. And you got the two hundred for, uh, I mean, three hundred for the curb, the meter, the lid, and the curb stop, that's five hundred dollars, great.
Yep.
Yeah.
You done fifteen hundred dollars, and the two hundred dollars for the deposit. So thirteen hundred is what you would have one. That's just for water.
Yeah, yeah, and you gotta install it too, so.
So that would cover.
Yeah, tw- twenty-five hundred, I'd say that'd be the minimum.
Is that for businesses also?
No.
No, 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 it's a residential. I'd say a three quarter inch line.
Right, yeah.
Is that what we have?
They have never collected a penny of it.
It's either three quarter or more.
What was that today?
Oh, that's a two inch line, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So, we're gonna, is this good for the, the tap? It just has one much.
Yeah, we don't have to pay anything for sewer tap on, uh, our fraternity, so we can, we can knock that off of there.
So twenty-five hundred and two thousand?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. You said, not so much, is that what you said?
I said, we can knock that off of the, off the twenty-five hundred. Most of the time, they're both the same. But, we have an additional five hundred for every water here, so. And that has to be one separate account.
Okay, on this, is the, the ones that's one inch or one and a half or two? What is the, is that the extra cost of the rate, two inch meter, is that what that's for?
Two inch meter, and the pipe, and all that stuff. All, all combined, basically.
So that would cover the thirty-nine dollar cost?
Yeah.
We actually laying in the some, uh, uh, so in fact.
So you're gonna, is that how much?
Okay, um, um, the one inch, one and a half inch, and two inch, you wanna take out those impact fees?
Yes.
And then, um, for the, the meter up at the top, the meter, the very. Yeah, I was pointing to something like y'all have it, I just.
I don't, we don't have it.
I brought this.
I don't, I don't, so it's wonderful, well, sorry, I have some of it.
Yeah, that, that's what I brought on, but.
Yeah, okay, so go with one more time.
I don't have that.
We don't have those.
Well, I brought it for my, a previous.
So go ahead.
Okay.
So go ahead.
So, okay, for the, for residential, um, the meter would be the total cost would be twenty-five hundred. And you got five hundred for our fraternity. Then you got five hundred for your meter and your inspection. And then you have two hundred for deposit. Which would leave your meter installation, is this what that is for, is thirteen hundred. And then for your sewer tap, it would be two thousand dollars. Not ensuring that you're, well, without that impact fee.
Yeah, that, this does not include any, um, road crossings or anything like this.
Right, right, it does not, yeah.
It's just the tap.
Right. If you had a bore under the road or something, it would be.
Or gotta run, you know, mile and a half, or whatever, it doesn't, it doesn't include any of that.
We shouldn't have any of that.
Right, I mean, it's just. I mean, there's an addition, they'll have to pay for.
Everything.
Yeah, there we go, wiring. And then you're, then that, if you're going on down the line, just, you wanna count that impact fee of the other three, of the businesses. But everything else would stay the same.
Everything the same, except the impact fee.
Yeah.
Hello, Moto.
So it depends on like, y'all wanna go with that, or wait on the rate?
I would do that. And we can do a rate study, if we have to come back and, and do amendment or something, we can do that. But we, we're, we're getting too far behind in our installations.
Okay, I make the motion that way. That we go with these changes that we discussed on the, um, water taps and the sewer taps, on the homes and, um, residential's and businesses.
Are you making the deposit two hundred now for the, like, service?
Yeah, two hundred.
This is just for the new, this is just for the new, yeah. We need to put that on the agenda to do, to raise that other, uh, different.
This is just the.
The new's, the new's.
War, war sewer rate, uh, fees, yeah.
You said, uh. Jane, you have a question? One more time, make sure I got everything written down, make sure I understood. Please.
Oh, you don't need to.
Oh, yes.
Um, okay, on the res- the residential?
Yes.
You've got, um, the upper trinity's five hundred. The, uh, deposit is two hundred. Your curb stop, your customer service, whatever you wanna call it, CSI, plus your meter, and your, uh, lid cover is five hundred.
Okay, got it.
So that's going, your, your total, twenty-two hundred out there is going to be thirteen. So it'll be a total of twenty-five hundred.
Wow, thank you.
Did we get a second yet?
Oh.
I'll second him.
Okay, you got a question?
Okay.
Alright, Jane, are you in favor?
I am. Yes.
They should.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to C, excavator part repair.
I haven't had a, we ain't yet told me that yet. It's not unoperable.
Oh, okay.
It's the, it's a fall.
Oh, good.
Like, they can pick it up and brush and stuff like that, or.
Cover it under.
Use it to sewer plant, they scoop those, uh, cattails and stuff like that out. That's the part that's not operational at this point.
Is it the?
I did, uh, sorry?
Is it the thumb or spoke?
Yeah. So, he did, they did send us a. A estimate on it, though, our quote. And that was, uh, to, to do the band-aid on it's two twenty-five, and the other's five hundred. Well, that's kinda where I was at, or I would say, uh, I don't know, I'll do it, I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, not exceed five hundred dollars. Cause we do have a quote for that, and if we can get it done cheaper with another company, then we can definitely do that, that's our problem.
As long as we have one company.
Yes, and that, now this one's only ninety days.
The warranty is?
Mm-hmm. So.
So not exceed five hundred?
Yeah, not exceed five hundred.
I'll second.
You will?
Thank you. Who, you gonna do?
No, you do.
Okay.
Are you in favor, Jane?
I am.
Yes, Debbie, you?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
D, new sanitation rates.
Okay, um, Diane can probably enlighten us on this. We got, uh, we got Weeks, and we got, um.
Should have sanitation solutions.
Do you hear anything with sanitation for?
Uh, Jared, Jason Stevens said he talked to you about that ago. Okay, well, I called him today, and he had said that he talked to Diane, and, um, um, I didn't, he didn't say what he told her, he just sent me this, a request for a proposal that we would need to bend that spell out. So I called Honey Grove, which uses sanitation solutions. And their poly carts are twelve seventy-six, if they add an additional one, it's three seventy-seven. Uh, their two yard is sixty-eight thirty-one. Three yard is ninety-oh-one, four yard is one oh-two forty. Six yard is one eighteen twenty-six, and all those are picked up once a week. Um, they have a roll-off for a month, it's two ninety-two thirty-eight. Uh, they have an eight yard, they'll pick it up, um, for Weeks is five twenty-five.
And how many is their trash cans?
Uh, well, over there, it's twelve seventy-six, and three seventy-seven for an additional one. That's why, after you just said you talked to Diane, I didn't, um, press any more on how much, um, cause he asked me how many that we had, and I didn't know how many poly carts we had out, out.
So, by Republic's price, sanitation solution is cheaper.
Yes, and I will throw in.
Both of them are cheaper than Weeks.
And I will throw in there that the sanitation solutions does give a, uh, five hundred dollar scholarship to a graduate senior at La Dona, which Republic does not. So.
Um, um.
But I don't know the exact amount to tell y'all, just, that's just for Honey Grove.
Okay, so.
And then the Weeks guy is.
Yeah, we, we've got all the eighteen for the cart, and, yeah, all the other stuff is, is higher. Not a lot, but it's higher, so, um, did he send you some, something to send back to them?
Well, no, he sent a, uh, this is what they have, it's for Red River, Red Water. City of Red Water, I don't know where that is, anyway. He said that we need to get something like that together to send a proposal for them to fill out. And I read it front and back, and if we, you know, wanted a proposal from the, from them.
Oh, this is to get a proposal?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I gotcha, I gotcha.
And who is that?
Uh, it's from Sanitation Solutions. But it's a proposal that, um, City of Red.
Our request for a proposal.
I won't say Red River, but it's Red Water, yeah.
Republican sanitation's cheaper?
Where the Republican sanitation's cheaper?
Um, Republic was twenty-three-ten, and we're gonna have to go up.
But where did you get your numbers, twenty-three-ten?
It's not that.
Cause that, no, that's just fifteen.
Well, for seven, fifteen, sixty and seven-fifty is twenty-three-ten.
The seven-fifty's for the extra cart.
That's for an extra cart.
That's clear, that's what I asked last time, and.
Yeah.
Y'all said. For two carts.
That's for two carts, was a seven-fifty, extra.
Okay, new ser- the residential service was fifteen-sixty, the new rate, nine-six gallon cart was seven-fifty. I asked at the last meeting, and y'all said these two added together is twenty-three-ten, and we were losing money. And y'all wanted to go up. And so, that's when I said we need to get a.
Right, and that, that was, that information was incorrect, that.
So nobody told me that it was incorrect.
Right, we didn't know that till, what, today, yeah.
So when somebody's trying to get quotes, then.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. You what? We're, we're not, we're not making what we were before, is the thing, so. Yes. No, it's because we did not increase our rate. When Diane said their rate, we didn't increase ours.
But if we would've increased it last month to twenty, or the last meeting to twenty-eight dollars, it would've been way over.
It would've been too much.
Yeah, so if we'd had some communication, then we would've known that.
Good job, good job.
We're not losing it.
Well, on that bill that we have gotten two months prior to this, if we'd have been looking at the top of it, we wouldn't have been losing that much, cause we'd addressed it earlier.
Well, we should've addressed the.
Anyway, so when are we gonna do that?
When we got the.
They send you a budget they're doing every year.
Okay, so what are we doing here?
Yeah.
Waiting on sanitation solutions?
No, I, I was just, it's whatever y'all wanna do.
I mean, he gave me some prices, so, and they're cheaper than Republic. So, um. I would say at this point in time, let's don't, let's don't do any new sanitation rates, let's check with sanitation solutions. And see if that brings us back to, you know, the same, you know, profit that we were making on the, on the last ones.
So send them a request for a proposal?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Take your mic.
Are you gonna do that, or you need Diane to do that, or?
Well, I think it's Diane's job.
Uh, if she's got time, she can do it.
Yeah.
That's, now that's just his example.
Does anybody know what the default or notice provision is with Republic to cancel the contract? Well, they haven't renewed the contract. So it's this month or month, I don't know.
The contract said it was signed January the first, from January the first, two thousand eighteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
That was the last written and signed. Sounds very correct.
And we requested a new contract, and that's what.
Okay. Reg, you my motion to rescind the request?
A proposal.
Proposal?
Yes.
Didn't we have sanitation solution?
We had a proposal.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we had a proposal.
I heard they were practical bankrupt. They were buying up the waste management. They still operate under sanitation.
Okay, I'll say.
All in favor, Jane?
I.
Debbie?
Yeah, I.
I.
Thank you. Uh, E, city and foreigners agreement.
Okay, is this proposal or what?
Yeah, uh.
I got it right there.
Uh, maybe not good.
Well, it's on that school letter.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, um, page one, one point three. Um, I think it just should be the pre-approved by the mayor. For forty hours, and any additional time must be pre-approved by the mayor. Cause we don't know what's going on. Um, then, or you don't?
Maybe I did, I'm sorry, yes, I did. What page?
First page, first.
Okay.
The one point three.
One point three.
For our additional time must be pre-approved by the mayor. Take out the days again. Um, now, these are just my suggestions. Uh, two point one, uh, that year date needs to be, uh, just twenty, and then dash underneath it with the year change. Then two point two, it says, who shall serve at the pleasure, I don't think that is a very good word, we need something else. Of the city, the pleasure of the city council?
I think just will serve.
Bring another one.
At the will.
Shall serve at the will of the city council? Okay, we're gonna do at wheel, I don't like any leisure of the city.
Trying to spice up your life a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, and then on the last page where it says sign there again, change that date, your date to twenty, and then a dash after the zero. Or not dash, but underline, feeling, yeah. Now, that was all I saw, I don't know what y'all.
I agree with that.
On up at the top, the date, at the very first paragraph, says day of the little bit, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah.
We just need to put that date.
Yeah.
Did you type this?
I did.
I did not type that, but I looked at it, and in those, it should, yeah.
But it resembles my type.
The problem, what you need to do is, is ask your lawyer, send it to you in words, so you.
Lawyer can, uh, Mr. Ham, would you like to send this to us in words?
Yeah, we send it to you. If you got the corrections, I'll send it to you. But it, it needs to be in word here, because when you hire somebody else, you need to be able to just change it again and again, again.
Can we hire somebody else?
So you made that motion.
Um, made the motion to accept the employee agree, appointment agreement.
What changes?
With changes as noted.
Do I have a second?
Second, you can second.
Jane?
Yeah.
Jane, you're in favor, I'm sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Debbie?
Yeah.
Asia?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Number ten. New businesses consider actual water meters not being read correctly.
There was a, yeah, or, I'm sorry, an amendment, a, an agenda, um. Request, she's not here?
Yeah, she's right here.
I said right here.
I'm fine.
I just have a couple of questions. One is when you get a work order from the city, is there supposed to be a date on it of when they're gonna come and do the job?
There'll be a date on it that we received a work order. But as far as when it's going to happen, probably not, because it's going to be a prioritized item. And just like today, I mean, there's no way if we would've scheduled something for today that, that it would happen. Not gonna happen.
And I don't understand how I can go from, he was gonna say two thousand gallons of water, in one month, to use it eighteen thousand gallons of water? And I live in a brand-new house, there's no list, and I did not go to pull in.
Has your meter been?
What was your name, I'm sorry.
My name is Dorothy Johnson.
Go ahead.
And I live with.
Go ahead, go ahead, that's your brother, so you go ahead.
And this is my. There's always been a problem with that water meter.
Well, we're this, uh, we're going through, trying to change meters that are problems.
Yeah, um, do Diane, Diane, do you know if that meter was re-read?
I've taken a picture of it all week, and it's been the same all week, still covered with mud.
It's been that way ever since.
For a year since I moved here a year ago.
Yeah.
Um. I will have to vouch for the meter readers and everybody else. With the rain, with the weather. That meter is going to get covered up with mud, and I'm not saying, I'm not trying to say that they're reading it, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying.
But why is the picture the exact same, with the leaf still there, and ev- everything's exactly the same, all the pictures I'm taking?
Again, I'm, I'm not saying they're reading it, I'm saying, we hear this every day. That there's mud covering the meters and this and that, and I know full of well that a lot of them have been read.
Well, I've moved here from.
Read them myself, um, so.
I've moved here from Easton, when I lived in Easton, my water bill was never over fifty dollars. So when I come up, moved up here, and I'm living in a brand-new house with brand-new everything, except the brand-new water meter. I wouldn't think it would be eighty dollars, and I come up here and I could, the first time I paid the bill, I complained about it. She says, man, hold on, we have a minimum of two thousand. I never complained again until I got my bill this month.
Right, so what, what is our minimum bill, like with?
Eight-four-oh-one.
So. Again, that, that's as cheap as it's gonna get.
I, I, like I said, I never complained about that bill, but this bill was two hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I agree, I, I understand that.
And I don't think I need to be paying a bill like that.
And I can vouch and change your meter if it's wrong.
That meter, ever since the house was completed, when they re, got, while we got the wa- new house. Since then, it has been covered in mud, and we have checked it for on and off. And the concrete around it is cracked, and the lid is laying on the side, cracked and half.
What's the address, please?
Five-oh-ninety East Main Street.
Is that new?
It's the new gray and white house. And it has been that way, cause we've all been taking pictures, and I, I was overseeing it when it was being built, so I know.
And it's been that way.
Ever since they completed it, it has been covered in mud, and it has not been cleaned out.
We will have someone go by and read the meter and take a picture of it, okay? Um, that away, there's no question about, was it read, was it not read, did they open the box, did they not open the box? You know, I mean, I, I mean, that, that argument can go crazy, but anyway.
It's a broken house.
Let's, let's get the meter read.
Okay.
And work from there, okay?
Thank you, sir.
I'm not saying that, uh, one way or other, what, what the bill's gonna end up, cause that's, you know.
I mean, I could've understood, say, maybe a hundred because of the freeze, and I had to rent, let my water run.
I understand.
I can understand there being, say, maybe fifty dollars more than the eighty, I wouldn't have worried about, and I would've just paid that.
Right.
But when it was two hundred and four dollars more. And it said I used eighteen thousand gallons of water, I didn't put a pool in my backyard, I'm sorry, I wish I could've, but I didn't.
I understand.
Thank you.
Give it, give us a chance to reread it, and, uh, we will let you know something.
Thank you for your.
Do you have a time? About when they do?
Well, from all the repairs, I, I can understand, I've been hearing all the repairs that's going on, and I know there's only one guy that does it. So I just want y'all to know, I am very concerned about this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will, I'll make a motion, we go by and reread her meter and take a picture, and contact her with, uh, the correction or whatever we, we end up with.